All good to let folks in, thank you. Okay, good morning, everybody. We are going to give another minute for people to get connected to their audio and to be let into the meeting. And we will call the order, call to order the meeting shortly. So, thank you for your patience. And we would remind everybody, if you're not currently speaking, if you could please mute yourself, we would appreciate that very much. Okay, it looks like everybody has been admitted into the meeting. So, we will at ten oh one, call the meeting to order. And if you would please rise and we're gonna put a flag on the screen here and we will, if you could repeat after us. For the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Okay, thank you all very much. And we are going to accept any public comment for items not appearing on today's agenda. If there would be any public comment at this time, please feel free to unmute yourself and offer public comment. Is there any public comment for items not on the agenda at this time? Okay, hearing none, if there is any public comment for items when they are under discussion, we would accept them at that time. We're gonna move to look for a motion to approve our minutes from our meeting last week, Tuesday, January nineteenth. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the Tuesday, January nineteenth Board of Commissioner meeting minutes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, do so by saying aye, please. Aye? The motion is carried, okay? Under our COVID nineteen planning and response section, we are going to turn it over to Margaret Gray for some introductions for our guests today and the presentation that they have. So, we will turn it over to Margaret. Good morning, Margaret.
Thanks very much. Good morning, everyone. The first topic under our COVID nineteen planning and response segment this morning is an update on the COVID nineteen vaccine. Of course, a subject very much of interest to the general public and of great significance as we work our way through this COVID nineteen pandemic. With us this morning, it's my pleasure to introduce to you again, Tom Charles, Executive Vice President with Mount Nittany Health, who has been leading us through the vaccine updates in our community. And so, we've asked him this morning to present an update from the perspective of Mount Nittany Health. So, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Okay, well, thank you, Margaret, and thanks to the commissioners for inviting me. And we're delighted to talk about this important topic. I'll make a few comments and then I'd be happy to answer some questions. I would say at the outset that I am here on behalf of the entire team at Mount Nittany Health. I'm so proud of them. I mean, they've been doing a tremendous job all the way through this pandemic, no matter what phase of the pandemic that we're in. And of course, now, you know, one of the new elements is vaccinations. And we're all trying to work very hard to do everything we can to secure vaccine and distribute as much of that as quickly as we can across the county. So, I'd be happy to talk a little bit about that. Just to ground, we are at the tail end of vaccinating more than thirty-four hundred healthcare personnel across center counties. So, we have been busy vaccinating. We started this back in late December. We've been moving through January and we're just wrapping up the initial allotment of vaccine that we've gotten from the Department of Health. And so, we've been very fortunate to do that, very proud to do that. It's been an ongoing series of clinics that we have that have been not only our own employees, but a wide variety of healthcare providers across the county. So, that's been a tremendous privilege to do that. Of course, the big news recently was the expansion of eligibility criteria to those age sixty-five and over and sixteen to sixty-four with high-risk medical conditions. I would encourage everybody to check the Department of Health website on a regular basis for a couple of things. Who is eligible to receive the vaccine? So, the department is updating that periodically. And then, the department has also asked all of us who are receiving vaccine to indicate our contact information and who we are. And that's on a map on the Department of Health website as well. And so, assuming that everybody who is getting vaccine has provided their information, you should be able to go to those maps and see, well, who is actually getting the vaccine? And you know, that's an important resource for people and that's constantly being updated as that, as that changes. So, people understand how this works. The state gets its vaccine from the federal government. And then, the state distributes vaccines to organizations like Mount Nittany Health or others who are providing the vaccinations. In this part of the state, that's not going through the counties, it's not going through the borough. It's going through individual healthcare providers ourselves, center volunteers in medicine has receiving vaccine at this point. I think there are some local pharmacies who may also be receiving that. But that's the way it works, the federal government to the state. So, the state has to wait and see what they get from the federal government. And then, the state turns around and gets requests from all of us for the quantities of vaccine that we would like to get to be able to vaccinate. And then, the state makes a determination based on the request that they have gotten and the supply that they receive. And they decide how much gets pushed out to each of the individual organizations. In our case, as is with, as is the case, I'm sure with most organizations, when the criteria were suddenly expanded to include a lot more people, we significantly upped the quantity of vaccine that we requested from the state. But because the supply is not unlimited, we are not getting everything that we request from the state, and that's understandable. There is simply far, far more demand for this right now than there is available vaccine. And an important thing for people to recognize is that this is going to take a period of time, simply to work through the number of individuals who are currently eligible for the vaccine, let alone additional categories of individuals who may become eligible at some point in the future. There is far, far more demand than there is supply at the federal level, which trickles down to the states, which trickles down to the individual institutions. It's also important to say that we are all working together to provide as much vaccine as quickly as we possibly can. We're providing vaccine, other organizations are providing vaccine. This is a public health emergency. This is, you know, organizations all doing everything that they can. And I would encourage individuals to, you know, educate themselves, find out where there may be available supply and take advantage of that. We are waiting our next shipment. We don't have word yet from the Department of Health when we're going to get the next shipment. We expect that to be very soon. And it's our hope that we can stand up some large-scale vaccination clinics next week and continue those going forward, all based on the availability of supply. Because of the criticality of the shortage of vaccine, we will open schedules for these clinics when we have the vaccine in hand. So, if, starting Friday, if you go onto our website and you see that there's a spot available, it means that we do have vaccine in hand. And that's important because we don't want to be scheduling and rescheduling people, nor do we want to not fill up the times that we have available. One thing I would ask the public is, it's very understandable, people may be looking to get vaccinated as soon as possible. People may be putting themselves on multiple lists, going to multiple sites. It's very important, no matter where you do this, that if you make an appointment to get vaccinated, it's critically important that you show up. We plan the reconstitution of the vaccine. We plan the whole supply chain very carefully so that we're not wasting a single dose. And if people make appointments and they don't show up, it increases the chance that some vaccine may not be able to be given because there's a very defined window of time within which it has to be given. So, you know, research your options, but if you sign up to get vaccinated someplace, please, please, please show up because that will allow us to give as much of this as we possibly can. It's great that people want to be vaccinated. We strongly encourage it. It's an important part of bringing the pandemic under control. It's going to take time. In the meantime, we have to keep doing everything that we've been doing. Masking, social distancing, limiting our gatherings, washing our hands. The vaccine is a bright spot, but it's not going to fix everything quickly. It's gonna take time. As a community, we have to keep doing the things that we've been doing, even though it feels difficult, even though we're getting tired. We have to keep doing those things in order to give the vaccine a chance to, to do its part in, in bringing the pandemic to a conclusion. So, that's my overview. I'd be happy to take any questions. Hopefully, that's helpful. I would say patients, understand that there are many, many, many more people want this than the supply that we're able to get. And it's just going to take time for that to work itself out.
Tom, thank you very much again for your time here today and all that Mount Nittany Medical Center and everybody within your organization is doing to keep us safe. And, and we are eternally grateful as we go into twenty twenty-one for the work that's being done by your group. Just some brief comments from myself, and I think I speak for all the commissioners, when I want to reiterate to our community that since center county government does not have a county health department, there have been, there has been confusion and, and understandably so, when certain residents are seeing what's happening in Allegheny, Bucks or Montgomery County, where they have a county government-run health department at the local level. And so, we are getting many calls from folks saying, well, Montgomery County has on their website how you can get the vaccine, other counties do as well. And it's a wonderful fact that we, center county, bring in a lot of people from around the state who might have lived elsewhere or have family who live throughout the state. So, we're a very diverse community, but we do not have that local county health department. So, really, what we're, we're doing and our role is to facilitate and to, and to work with our emergency management agency and our county one and Pima, who, when they move into larger-scale, general population vaccination clinics, we will be working very closely with Pima to operationalize the Department of Health's plan for how do we do these large clinics? And that's gonna be a big role for us. And in addition, like you said, Tom, masking, social distancing, hand washing. If you aren't feeling well, stay home or get that test to make, to see if it is COVID nineteen. We are having that testing clinic and we've been doing that for quite some time. And so, that's a role that we can play without having that county health office. So, just to let the, our, our citizens and residents know, we are, we are, we, we want to be as helpful as we can be with the vaccine. However, it is, is unlikely, it just, it's not gonna, center county government, because we do not have that county health department, is gonna be very unlikely to have a county-run vaccination clinic that is run by county staff. We may be partnering with other groups, but we do not, don't have the staffing infrastructure at this time to do that. And also, the training, as you know well, Tom, in order for our residents to get shots, it has to be done by a licensed individual. You can't just be done by, oh, just putting that out there to, to give the, the residents of our, our community some, uh, some understanding about where county government's coming from. But I think one of the big questions is, we are hearing, obviously, we know that the most effective way that the vaccine works is to get the two doses. And so, when an individual on Friday would be signing up for that first round, are they, are they signing up for two schedules? Or how are you handling that second shot?
Mike, that's a great question. So, I can speak to exactly how we're handling it. When you show up to get your first shot, you walk out of there with an appointment for your second shot. So, you're signing up for number one, you show up and we give you a piece of paper and we say, here's where you need to be and when you need to be there for number two. So, it's critically important. And of course, we're, you know, we're just managing all of our schedules in a way that allows us to accommodate that. But you will walk out with a date and a time for your second shot.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the big question that we've also been hearing. That's fantastic. Thank you, Tom. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Higgins for any comments, questions.
Sure. Tom, thank you for all you and your staff have done for the last ten-plus months. And thanks to center volunteers in medicine, Geisinger and all of the other healthcare personnel in the county. It, it feels like we're beginning to see a light at the end of a very long tunnel. As Commissioner Pike mentioned, at this point, for priorities one A, one B, probably even one C, it appears to be pretty much on Mount Nittany, Geisinger, center volunteers in medicine and selected pharmacies that have the, the staff and the authorization. There's a chance that maybe by the time we're inoculating just general population under the age of sixty-five with no pre-existing conditions, the county might help with some of the, the details about where and when and how and power supplies and things like that. But for those first two to three groups, how do people sign up on the, the website for, for the hospital?
So, we will stand up on Friday, Mark. We will have a scheduling option available live on Friday. So, right now, because all of our clinics through January are filled and because we don't have the supply in hand for February, we've held off on posting those schedules, but we expect to have that up and running on Friday. People can go to our website, right on the landing page, there's a schedule, your coronavirus, your coronavirus vaccine, your COVID vaccine. And you can click through a couple of pages and you'll come to the place to register. So, that's the way you can do it at our place. I can't speak for how CVIM is handling theirs. I think Geisinger has an online signup. I'm not sure about the pharmacies. But that's why I would go back to the Department of Health map. And there is, for each of those organizations, there should be a way to contact them. And you know, that would be the path to follow to sign yourself up.
And, and what about seniors who perhaps aren't computer literate or people who live in areas with just absolutely broadband service? Commissioner's been working hard to reduce that, but there's still areas of the county where you're not gonna be able to sign up directly yourself. Can a friend sign you up?
That, you have to provide your own registration information for that, but you know, provided that, you know, that in, as long as that information is entered, yes, that's the important thing, Mark. So, if you might be working with a friend who has that and could do that, obviously, you'll have to show your own information when you come. But yeah, people could work with somebody who has that. We also, as you can imagine, a lot of organizations' phones were simply overwhelmed when the state suddenly, without warning, expanded the criteria. And so, you know, we're, we're also trying to manage having the system set up to be able to accommodate the phone calls that we know we're get, we're working on that. But as you can imagine, everybody was calling everybody when this came out. And so, we'll, we'll, we'll have something up and running that will give people that option.
Good, good. So, you, you could sign up your parents, elderly relatives, provided you had their information. And obviously, you wanna communicate closely to them that, hey, mom, hey, dad, you're signed up at this time, at this place. If need be, I'll come and pick you up and drive you over there. But also, perhaps pastors or social service agencies could sign their clients up as well?
Again, we, what we need, Mark, is the individual information of that individual who is going to sign up. That's the critical element for us.
And Thomas, as part of the logistics, you know, I've been reading up on this quite a bit. I believe if you use something called, a specialty needle called a low dead space needle, oftentimes you could coax, coax an extra dose out of the vial. Does Mount Nittany and other healthcare providers have enough of those specialty needles to get us twenty percent more vaccine?
Well, so far, our experience, and we've been dispensing both the Moderna and the Pfizer, is that we have been getting more than the packaged doses out of each vial. So, yes, the good news is we've been able to stretch our supply and get additional doses out of most of the vials that we've been using.
Very good. I'm sure that's part of the training for the licensed personnel that do that. But again, just wanna thank our healthcare heroes for all they're doing and how difficult it's gotta be to show up to work every day, knowing that there's a chance that you could come down with us and possibly pass it on to, to loved ones. So, thanks again for everything you and your staff are doing, Tom.
Yeah, absolutely. It's our pleasure. Thank you.
I'll, I'll yield the rest of my time to Steve.
Hi, Tom. First of all, I want to thank you for everything you and your whole team at Mount Nittany Health have, have done to, to work through this. And it's been touched on a few times, but I wanna voice my frustration in a couple of areas. But the, the primary one is the way the notification process has been bollocked up. When you have the state putting out a, a map saying, okay, you can get it here, you can get it here, get it here, get it here. And that's fine, but ultimately, there's no availability of resources. No, there's no vaccine out there. So, you can call and call and call and not find what you're looking for. And I know that's been a source of great frustration for many of our residents. But I would suggest, and, and I don't know, I mean, the Department of Health has been vague and, and very nebulous about how, how this whole process is gonna unfold. But it would seem to me that when you expand the availability of, or, I guess, the access to, to various groups and you don't have supply to, to provide that, it's, it's very frustrating. And the other thing, I, I'm just gonna get off my chest while I have it here, is there should be a regional, a, a, a regionalized notification system. I know we have a number of, of places here in center county that which, which quote-unquote are authorized to, to provide the vaccine. But there should be, and I'm hoping that somebody in the Department of Health is listening, there should be some idea about what that, what that supply chain looks like in logistics of, of how to provide it. Because you can call your place, you can call one of the pharmacies, but if there's, I mean, it, it just becomes counterproductive if people are making fifty, sixty, a hundred calls to no avail. There, there needs to be some, some semblance of order in this, in this process to make sure that the people are not wasting their time calling and calling and calling. And there's, I don't think there's any reason why that same site that provides the information about where you can get the shot should, should have, okay, they have X number of doses. And there should be a countdown number and, okay, if, if you have a thousand doses and you've accounted for nine hundred of them, there's, you know, you, you have a hundred left. I mean, there's gotta be some better system than, than, than what we're seeing right now. And I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Well, Michael said at the, in his comments, that there are parts of the state, especially the larger counties, that have centralized county health departments that can act as that, I'll say, control point or centralized point across must, much of the state. Steve, that's not the case. And so, you run into exactly what we're running into now, which this is dispersed and there isn't any kind of centralized place to go. I think it certainly would be easier from a public perspective if there was one place that people could go and see that kind of information. I think that would be welcome. It would make things more transparent and easier to do for the general public. You know, that would be wonderful. Unfortunately, it's not the circumstance that we're in. But you know, that, that concept, I think, has a lot of merit to it. And it's such a large-scale undertaking here that it really does require some kind of collective centralized work like that. You know, that, that really would be a, it would be a beneficial thing.
It just seems to me that, that there should be some system in place. And again, if you have a thousand doses to, to distribute, that, you know, at the end of the day, if you still have eight hundred left, you know, that, that, that's not accounted for or you've, you already have a handful that aren't accounted for, that people know that, they don't waste their time and energy to continue to, you know, to hammer these. Well, in your case, it's a hospital, but in, but in the other case, it could be a, you know, it could be a, a private pharmacy that is just being, you know, inundated with phone call after phone call when really the, the same answer is no. So, there's, there's gotta be a better system. And I, I would encourage that whoever is in charge of this to work a little, a little harder to put a better system in place for our communities.
Steve, Steve, one quick comment on that, back to something I said earlier. That is part of the reason that we are, as we go forward, we're releasing the schedules for these vaccination clinics based on the availability of vaccine. So, if, you know, in the way that we will have it set up, if you go and you see a spot available, that means that we have vaccine in hand to be able to do that. You know, as opposed to building a schedule out for, you know, a number of months and not knowing if the vaccine will actually be in hand. So, you know, that's an important consideration. I think when you schedule yourself, you, you wanna make sure that it's gonna be there for you.
Now, I guess what I'm saying is, on your end, I, I mean, you guys are doing a, a yeoman's job and a fantastic job of, of get, of organizing what you have. But again, when, when you have the supply chain problem of, of availability of, of vaccine, it just compounds this immeasurably. It's not like, it's not like you have an endless supplier, even a finite supply. You don't have any supply right now. You don't know when you're getting supply. There's no communication when that supply is gonna become, you know, an option. It, it just seems like the, the, the level of communication and, you know, and it trickles down to us, and I'm sure it trickles down to you, where people are expecting us to have answers and, and, and we don't have answers, you don't have answers. And it's just very frustrating when, you know, as we move forward and they expand the, the, the availability, I guess technically of, 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 of the vaccine, but there's no supply to, to provide that service. And it, it just, it seems there's gotta be a better way of doing this. And it, it, it doesn't seem that difficult. Thank you for letting me voice my frustration.
Okay, so, thank you again, Tom. We appreciate you hearing our questions, comments, concerns and clarifications from us. We stand ready, you know, as you know well, to assist anybody. And we thank you for all the great work you're doing and let us know how we can be of service.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure. Thank you for your support. And I'm sure, you know, together we'll get through whatever's in front of us. And I'm sure there'll be more to come. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Tom, be well. Have a great rest of your day.
All right. Thank you.
In addition to our, on the presentation from Tom at Mount Nittany, we are also gonna be talking about our extend, extension of remote work status. We do, don't have it on the agenda, but it is coming to the end of this week. So, we'll turn it back to Margaret for further discussion on that.
Thank you. As you mentioned, the county protocols requiring a full remote work status ends this Friday, January twenty-ninth. And the question before the board today is whether or not to extend this status of full remote work or to ease back into a rotational platform for our offices. We are seeing more cases of COVID nineteen among our own staff and families. I think our numbers are going to match or exceed the number of cases that we saw across our employment base in January. We know that the virus is still quite active and among us. And so, the recommendation this morning would be to consider full remote work status for an additional two weeks and reevaluate on the Tuesday of the week ending with Friday, February the twelfth. This would allow us a couple more weeks to look at our quarantine numbers, look at the numbers in the county, look at the number of people being tested, look at the positivity rates, all the factors that we've used to put together these protocol recommendations. But for this morning, the recommendation would be to stay on full remote work status and keeping our, our buildings closed for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Margaret. I, I think as we still see our cases, we, we had yesterday a hundred and thirty in center county, which was a jump from the midpoint last week of where we were seeing cases at. And as you mentioned, our, our staff, the, the folks who, we wanna make sure we're keeping safe, our team are seeing increased cases within our, within our staff. So, we wanna make sure that we're doing all we can. So, I think two weeks is prudent at this point and we can reevaluate in a, in a week.
Yeah, this is Mark. A two-week extension is fine. As we mentioned, if somebody absolutely positively really, really must do some business in person, you know, we're set up to do that. But at this point, it's, it's the prudent thing to do, to do everything possible remotely.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so we will continue with an additional two weeks, Margaret. So, just for the record, that would put us until what, what date would we be continuing?
Until Friday, February twelfth.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you very much, Margaret, for that. Do we have anything else, Margaret, for COVID nineteen planning and response in that section?
On, not at this point.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, we're going to move into our contract section. And we will begin with Natalie Corman to discuss an item for CYS. Good morning, Natalie.
Good morning. On behalf of children and youth, we have before you the approval of the fiscal quarterly report to the department on behalf of Children Youth Office. The report is for July one, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty. And it's the fiscal report that highlights the funding that they have spent along with the county match that, that we offer. And our funding is right on target. We're, we've spent determining on the category twenty-three to thirty- to thirty percent. So we're right at that twenty-five, twenty-six percent uh, allocation, uh, which keeps us on target. Uh, and that's what we will be reporting to the state.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. Any questions on the uh, Act one forty-eight report for today?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, we would then look for a motion to approve the submission.
Motion to approve the submission of the Act one forty-eight reports to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, on favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Natalie.
Thank you.
Moving into capital projects, uh, we we do want to know that the action on this uh, is just a duplication there of the previous one. However, it it would be uh, consideration of the contract, but uh, we will look to Margaret to see how we would like to handle this for today.
Thanks very much. Uh, you'll recall several, several weeks ago that the uh, results of an RFP process were brought forward to the Board of Commissioners. The Commissioners requested that we move forward with contract negotiations with Watkins Security. And um, this morning we have um, the results of that contract negotiation would point out that there are several options for you to consider, uh, not only based on functionality, but on the location of the buildings. Chad's going to walk you through what those different options look like. And we also have Sheriff Samson, I believe, on the phone, and uh, Dave Rolls from nine-one-one and uh, Norm Spackman from nine-one-one. All of have been very um, active participants in putting together this uh, proposal for a uh, countywide integrated one-platform camera system um, for Center County Government. So at this point, I will turn it over to Chad.
Thank you and good morning. Yes, I'm going to review the different options in the contract proposal from Watkins Security. Their RFP consisted of a a base price of three hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred eighty dollars and eighty-five cents. The RFP also included a number of optional add-ons as well, things for uh, redundancy such as backup power supplies and server, and then additional search analytics. So we have put together four options for the board to consider. The first option would be the uh, base price uh, that that was included, and this would include work on the courthouse exterior and interior, the sheriff's office exterior and interior, the courthouse annex and Temple Court interior and exterior, the Willow Bank and Records Building interior and exterior, as well as all the M D J locations, M H I D and Transportation Building. The second option would include uh, would be the um, base camera price system as well as options for the the redundancy uh, such as uh, backup power supplies and server. That option would come to four hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. The next option would be the base price with uh, further search analytics. And that would come to four hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and ten cents. And then the last option would include the base price with uh, the redundancy add-ons and then the the further search analytics. And that would come to four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents. In addition to the four options, we also have options based on uh, locations as well. And so I I can turn it over to to Brian, uh, Sheriff Brian Samson now to add his thoughts.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you today?
Good.
I know the proposal is based on uh, four different options, but um, if you look at uh, option D, which is the best and of course, the most expensive, um, it's it's we think it's like getting your car with automatic transition, transmission, uh, air conditioning, everything. It has all the bells and whistles that we need to provide to provide the services that I I believe we as as uh, as county employees require and 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 expect for safety. Um, it would, it would dramatically reduce our time for looking up analytics uh, for the, for all the different systems. Um, it it's a highly functionable system, has everything that, everything that we would need. It'd be best system for that. It provides security, we believe, for all county employees. Um, it just, it's it's a hundred and fifty percent upgrade from what we have now. Um, I I I'm just, I mean, you, you know, the choices are for you, but um, option D, it 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 still comes under the uh, the the other bids we had. So uh, even with all the added analyticals, I think it's a, it's option D would be the best. That's just my, my two cents.
Okay, thank you very much, Sheriff. Uh, was there anybody else, Margaret, who's going to speak to this?
I know that uh, David Rolls is on the call here as well today. I don't know, uh, David, if you have anything you'd like to add, or if you are just at the ready for questions.
I'm basically at the ready for questions, but uh, my personal opinion, whichever option you do go with, is going to be a a vast improvement over what we already have. And I would like to thank the Commissioners for considering uh, this project.
This certainly is a culmination of a lot of work on behalf of the ad hoc camera group that studied our current system, looked at uh, what a a new system could include uh, by the many different buildings we have across Center County Government. Uh, so we've come a long way in a uh, lengthy process to get us to this point today with options for you to um, to discuss.
Okay, thank you, Dave. And then in terms of Lee, did you have anything to offer or wanted to speak to this at all?
Um, no, I I appreciated being part of the team. Um, I I I agree with what Brian said. Um, you know, the the different options and what it allows us to do and the things that Sheriff Samson was looking for as our security officer to provide, um, you know, the folks within the county, the employees and and as such, um, it it does provide and and it also still came in with all those options underneath the second proposal that we had, um, which did not include a a lot of those options. Um, so a- again, I I I can concur, that was the best option. Um, I feel it's a a very good system. Uh, it integrates with our access control as well. Um, it, you know, if we feel necessary, so uh, um, you know, the alerting features and what did it did it provide? So uh, again, um, I can concur with what he had stated, so appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Lee. So looking at
Again, Commissioner, this is Sheriff's House. I I appreciate your time and consideration for for all the options, uh, as Dave Rolls uh, stated earlier, I just uh, just appreciate your time today.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Thank you. Uh, so in terms of the options A, B, C, and D, in option D, the one that there's seems that we're leaning to as a group, the, it looks like some of the costs we could potentially utilize uh, I T. I mean, if we're talking about backup server, we could maybe pay for that out of the I T co- uh, uh, budget. I don't know if we can do the software out of there. I don't know if that's a stretch. Um, but we we did have a uh, a an amount of four hundred thousand dollars in the budget to be utilized for this project. So as we get close to half a million, we are looking at going over budget with that. But again, this is an upgrade. Uh, so uh, and it looks like this would do everything that we would need it to do. Um, in terms of where the software comes into this and ongoing licensing or ongoing annual, annual costs, uh, what would that, what would that look like? So does this take us through year five with everything? Is you you know, where where are we at in terms of uh, ongoing costs with this, with this option D?
There are no ongoing annual software costs. There are, there is a warranty on the installation and the software for the first couple of years. And beyond that, we can look at per uh, purchasing a uh, essentially a service option plan for routine upgrades and maintenance to the system.
With the, with, thank you, Chad. Is the service option uh, for A, B, and C all the same in terms of, or does it, does this, does the annual service option, when we get to that point of needing to purchase it, does that jump uh, with option D, or is it all the same?
It it would be the same. They provided a a number of of different uh, annual options based on uh, you know, how mu- how much time we we think we might need. So the annual service options varied from sixty-eight hundred all the way up to essentially fifty thousand, depending on, you know, I don't think we would need that high of an option, but um, it it would the uh, cost for the service option wouldn't necessarily change based on the option we picked, though.
Okay. And then in terms of how much we have, you know, for for our current system and how much we're paying for that year after year to give it, to give upgrades, to do whatever we need to do with it, do we have an estimated cost of that? You may have presented that at a previous meeting, but do we have an estimate about how much we're currently paying?
I actually don't. I don't know i- if if Lee or uh, maybe Brian has that. I'm I'm not sure what we currently have to pay in uh, annual costs, if anything.
I I'm going to refer to Lee. I I I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, currently, currently there is no service agreement um, for any of the systems that we currently have in place.
Well, or maybe I could put it this way, Lee, in terms of any fixes that you need to do or anytime you need to call them out, is it frequent? How um, are we paying our current vendor or current vendors? We have multiple, multiple ones. Are we paying them anything in addition? Um, I'm just looking at trying to, you know, if we're, if we're going to save any money by going in this direction, I think we will, but I'm just trying to get a handle on that.
Uh, we, yeah, we, like you said, we we budget, um, it's a few thousand. I want to say it's in a neighborhood of maybe five thousand. Um, I I can't say that we've uh, went uh, above and beyond that cost uh, with the current system, but uh, a a lot of those uh, resets and things like that, we we complete in-house. Um, and it's necessarily, it's a power issue or whatnot. So um, um, you know, again, the the newer system, we're going to have new technology and and whatnot. So um, but yeah, nothing, nothing on this as far as the uh, the an agreement or cost would um, you know, keep us from get, from going that direction.
Okay, thank you. And then two, two, two final questions.
Commissioner, I think, yeah, just real quick, the the system we have now is end of life. So the uh, we do it, we can with I T here. Um, I drop camera footage, uh, you know, I I just, I have to reboot it constantly. So it's end of life and it, I don't, I think about a year or two ago, we stopped using um, uh, who was it, Lee? I forget, um.
Uh, we had Wakeboard one time, yeah.
Wakeboard, yeah.
Yep.
The Wakeboard, you know, we just, you know, the I T's been thrown in for them, and they've actually, you know, put some bad names on the system just to kind of get us to the finish line here. So that's, that's all we're doing right now.
And and may I also add, on some of our systems, there's never been an update to them, and they're several years old. I mean, we're talking ten-plus years, and that I'm aware of, there's never been an update to any of them. So it, so update costs really hasn't, hasn't occurred because there hasn't been any done.
Okay, that's good. That's good. Okay.
It's been fifteen-plus years probably for our system, some of them.
And then in uh, last question uh, would be in terms of the training, uh, I I don't, I I would assume that it's included for your teams, for everybody that's involved in terms of training from Watkins on all of the different things that we can do with that. Is that, that's included in this cost?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, and training is included for uh, the the sheriff and whoever he wants to include on having access to the system.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, that's all the questions from me. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Higgins.
Sure. So I think it's been mentioned that our current system is a patchwork that was installed over a number of years. I want to thank everyone on the ad hoc uh, camera committee uh, for their work. Um, it sounds like some parts of this system are as much as fifteen years old. Um, you know, so in my opinion, if if the sheriff, you know, and nine-one-one um, and facilities and several other departments have reviewed this, um, and their recommendation is to uh, go with uh, option D. Um, you know, that sounds like a good idea to me. Um, and it sounds like we're getting a a fairly high-end um, system that's completely integrated uh, from a single vendor, um, where it's going to be a lot easier for the sheriff and his staff to review film. Uh, I don't think people realize that if something might have happened over a four-hour period, that means some poor person is watching four hours of video. Um, if the analytics here can drastically cut that time, uh, not only does it save county staff a lot of time, it also allows us to get back to law enforcement much more quickly uh, with actual uh, video and photos. So yeah, I I'd be in favor of uh, considering option D.
Uh, this is Steve. Uh, I guess my my first question is going to be, if, since we have four hundred thousand dollars uh, budgeted, we don't have the the uh, other eighty thousand uh, available right now, would it be possible to buy a lesser expensive auction and then upgrade later? Is that, you know, and 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 budget that at a future time, or is that not the, a practical consideration? If somebody can answer that.
I think some of the the redundancies could could possibly be purchased at at a later time. Um, I think that that would be feasible. I don't know if the, if the search analytics could be um, purchased at a later time. I'd have to get clarification if they need to be integrated when the system's put in place, or or if they could be um, put in later.
I'm, I'm just, from what my knowledge, we're trying to remember, I think some of the cameras have to come with the search analytics on them, so they'd have to be. I think it was the camera base for the search analytics, right? Uh, Dave, I I, am I right, Lee? Do you remember that?
That is what they indicated was uh, for some of the cameras to have the analytics uh, available, they have to be built right into the camera when they install them.
So essentially, the upgrade is not, not feasible at this point.
Commissioner, do you mean in ter- Steve, do you mean in terms of uh, it it sounds like the option would be either to go with, uh, we wouldn't be able to do some of the add-ons later on in the process? That's what it's sounding like. Is that what you're
Gathering. That was my question. Uh, I guess the, you know, I I would, my my only challenge here is where the money comes from. Eighty thousand dollars is, you know, significant uh, money in this regard. So not, not that I don't think it has value and it, you know, that's, that's not what I'm, you know, that's not what I'm suggesting. Uh, I'm just looking at the, at the financials and trying to figure out where the eighty thousand uh, might be achieved.
And one of the things that we can do is um, we do have some of that leftover grant money from the elections that uh, we could potentially utilize at some of the sites that have drop boxes. That would really be the magistrate office in Center Hall and then the Willow Bank Building as well. May offset at a few thousand dollars, but still uh, that could assist. And I think looking at the backup server, if we were going to go in that direction uh, using I T funds, I think would uh, from our reserve, I T reserve would be completely acceptable. So we're reducing it maybe, it's now down to an increase of sixty thousand dollars. Still uh, still valuable, uh, but but it does help a little bit to ease the burden.
Well, I'm just suggesting where the money comes from. I mean, at some point, do we take it out of contingency? Do we uh, you know, do we, how how do, what's it look like? I mean, we're, we're being very truthful these days. I'm I'm I'm, I'm just asking the question.
No, absolutely. I think, please, Margaret, go ahead.
I was going to say, um, we could reevaluate the capital projects that we have in the queue for twenty twenty-one and reorder and prioritize some of those um, if we were uh, to look at capital, additional capital funds for the project. This is another option.
No, I think, I think generally speaking, an increase in the capital fund might be the best way to do it, uh, just utilizing more resources there for the time being. That's how, I think that's how, how I would support going with option uh, D at this time. Any other thoughts on that?
Essentially, and essentially, you're, you're, you're looking at facial recognition technology, you're looking at retrieval technology, you know, at other advantages to the system other than just uh, uh, or just better video quality, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, the analytics would allow um, us to search by a shirt color or a car color uh, wh- which would really hone in on on what we're able to find and how quickly we're able to find them.
All right, I I'm just, again, my my suggestion would be, you know, that we try to find it, you know, kind of batten down where this money is going to come from before we allocate it.
Sure, I think, I think uh, Commissioner Higgins, if you're, if you, I don't know if you're, you have a a preference of where it's coming from, but I think capital fund, the capital fund that we have uh, unutilized would probably be the best way of paying for this at this time.
Capital's probably easiest, but if the other Commissioners want to pull a little bit from uh, the I T fund or from the um, uh, fund for um, um, making voting easier and um, uh, more accessible, I I'm okay with that, too. Uh fund for um um making voting easier and um uh more accessible, I I'm okay with that, too.
Okay.
All right, let's, I guess we might as well roll.
Okay, all right. So in terms of the action we'd be looking at would be to advance osh option D. To next week's consent agenda. Uh would there be a motion to that effect?
Sure. I'll make the motion to advance um contract option D, as in David, with Watkins Security LLC. To perform the services outlined in the request for proposal for the Center County Camera Project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Once again, to Lee, Chad, uh the folks in nine one one, Dave, Norm, and also uh the sheriff, we appreciate you working on this uh very much. Uh and I look forward to uh moving forward with this in the weeks and months to come, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank Commissioner for your time, Commissioners for your time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. Uh so uh Lee, we'll turn it over to you for this next item from uh uh Tyson Krupp.
Okay, I will, I I'm gonna defer over to Margaret on on this issue. She'd be working hard on this contract for us.
Okay.
But not hard enough because uh we need to table it one more week. We are uh still in um back and forth contract language. Discussions and Tyson had a um very abrupt change of personnel and so we're just a a delayed more than we expected to be, so um we're gonna. Ask for you to table this item.
Okay, sounds good. Would there be a motion to table this for one week?
Motion to table item C, service agreement with Tyson Krupp Elevator Corporation until next week's meeting.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, all right, and thank you, Margaret, for that. We will then move into our uh item D and welcome Chris Schner for a presentation uh for this item. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, thank you, Commissioner Blake. Uh it's been a while since I've been in front of the board, so just wanted to give everyone a a quick reminder of what this type of memorandum of understanding is being executed for. And the one that's brought before the board is a three-party agreement between the developer, township, and the county. Whereby the developer agrees to reimburse, in this case Potter Township, for the costs associated with the township engineers. Processing, reviewing, inspecting, and approving the engineering details of the plans. And Natalie has a short uh just two-slide PowerPoint presentation that she's gonna put up on the screen here in a minute. Uh the memorandum of understanding that is brought before the commissioners is the final land development. For the premier RV storage, it's located in Potter Township. It's located south, long state route three twenty-two, and just give it a second here while Natalie pulls it up. I appreciate that, Natalie. Thank you. And on your screens, uh highlighted in red is the area that is gonna be developed for what's called premier RV storage. And it's located about a half a mile east of the number one cycle center. And if there is directly adjacent to Scott's Landscaping, which is not a coincidence because the developer of premier RV storage is also Scott and Kimberly Burke. Uh the land development plan, Natalie, can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. The land development that was prepared by Penterra Engineering is for a nineteen thousand and thirty-five square foot. Building that's going to house five individual offices, four of which will be leased to prospective tenants. And the other uh use is going to be for RV storage. I believe there's gonna be twenty-one uh units that are designated for RV storage. And as you can see on the screen, they're proposing a underground stormwater facility to the north of the building. And they're gonna be sharing the existing drive called Maple Drive with Scott's Landscaping. And so that's the uh genesis of the plan that was presented or prepared by Penterra and announced with the memorandum of understanding is being brought before the commissioners this morning to execute.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. Any questions or comments uh for Chris on this item?
Just happened to drive by it yesterday, Chris, when I was heading out to do some hiking at Collier Lake, so.
They started, they they have done just a little bit of earth-moving activity before the uh the weather got bad. They wanted to go in and get a little bit of the grading done.
Okay. All right, fantastic, Chris. Uh hearing other questions, comments for Chris, we will look for a motion uh to uh that effect.
Motion to add the memorandum of understanding for final land development plan, premier RV storage to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thanks again, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioners, and have a nice day.
You, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, in item E, we're going to turn it over to Terry Trude from our probation and parole office for this item. Good morning, Terry.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Um on behalf of the juvenile probation office, we would like to recommend the board approve the owner-county agreement. With the Center County Youth Center, which is a five-county uh juvenile detention center owned by five counties. Um this contract is for one hundred and thirty-six thousand, oh de- oh eighty-one, which is funded fifty-fifty joint, which is state and county funds. Um is for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Any questions for Terry on this item?
No.
Now, it's been a great relationship and uh I continue to uh work with the board uh at the detention center to uh see other options. Uh is one of the challenges right now is the the population of the center is 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 pretty uh de minimis, if you will. And uh we're trying to to uh explore some other avenues of which we can uh better utilize and uh and and uh save money on that facility, so.
Okay, no, thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate you serving on that board uh uh now and in the future. Uh so we would then look for a motion of to the uh to add it to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add the owner-county agreement with the Central County's Youth Center to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, uh then we'll turn it back over to the sheriff for this item with Telios Soft.
Uh good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to, for the board to consider software agreeing with Telios Soft Inc. for our county suites for the sheriff's IT software. It's got, it it's for our civil and war process for all our records. Um and we've been with this system, I believe, for eight to ten years now. It's a great system. Um and I'm just asking the board to consider uh renewing the contract for a twelve thousand seven twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Uh is there a motion to add it to next week's consent agenda?
Motion to add the software maintenance agreement with Telios Soft to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you. Have a good day, guys.
You as well. Thank you. Okay, uh we're going to uh go into our grants section. We have two grants to discuss today. The first one is with our. Emergency Communications nine one one office, and we'll turn it over to our director, Norm Spackman. Good morning, Norm.
Good morning. Um we're asking for your approval of a grant agreement with Pima for the twenty twenty-one uh statewide interconnectivity projects. Uh we're working with our county partners in the Southern Alleghenies nine one one cooperative. The grant runs from January first through December thirty-first of this year. The grant front funds the EZNet network connectivity, the regional phone system, and the regional alley maintenance. Uh along with the Abco nine one one protocol maintenance and a new project of regional computed dispatch. Uh with the Southern Alleghenies Cooperative uh grant total of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars, ninety-three cents.
Okay, thank you very much, Norm. Any questions for Norm on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to move this to next week's consent agenda?
Motion to add the grant agreement with Pima to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much, Norm.
Thank you.
Moving into planning, we are going to turn it over to Ray Stalinas, and we will uh look for a motion for this item. Good morning, Ray.
Morning, Commissioners. Um here today for the uh submission of application for payment of for the uh Titan Energy Park. Our RACP grant in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. For those improvements which are mainly construction. The site, uh and as the uh payment number one indicates, uh they're at fifty-three percent of the construction project.
Okay, thank you very much, Ray. Any questions, comments on this item?
So uh Ray, this is uh part of the project that improved those buildings so that um businesses like uh Axeman Brewing and Titan Markets could move into the remodeled buildings?
Uh exactly, Commissioner Higgins, that's for the improvements that are at the site uh that are currently an ongoing, an ongoing project. Um so this is the first payment request, uh since the commissioners are the grantees for the project. I'm sure you will see a few others as we move along.
Great.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Uh we would look at this uh time for a motion.
Motion to. Add the application uh for payment to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Ray, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We have the consent agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve today's consent agenda?
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Under our ABCs, uh we will uh we will need to table today the appointment of Paul Takeak. Uh for the time being, uh we, what was, we were alerted that there is a ratio that we need to keep on the planning commission. Of citizens and elected officials, and so uh we wouldn't be able to appoint Paul at this time. But we could uh recognize a term expiration for one of the members that did uh end at the end of December, so. Uh would there be a motion to approve the term expiration um uh at this time?
Motion to approve the term expiration on the planning commission.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all.
I just wanna, I say, do wanna say, uh, this is uh Freddie Persick, and I I think Freddie's been a very, very valued uh member. Of the planning commission for a very long time, and I want to thank her specifically for her service to uh Center County and its ci- citizens.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, uh Steve. Uh many decades of service, so we appreciate her um her service. Uh hearing no further discussion on this, uh all those in favor of the term expiration, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried, and so we will uh, we can table indefinitely the other appointment. Uh and re- and return with another appointment in the coming uh weeks ahead. So would there be a motion to table the appointment to a planning commission?
Motion to definitely table the appointment to the planning commission.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay, thank you. Uh we have no letters of support today, but we do have one action. Item for liquid fuel fee for local use, and we'll turn that over to Margaret.
Thank you. Um the item today is requesting approval for payment in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to Marion Township. Um for replacement of an archpipe on Wait Lane.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Would there be a motion to approve? Okay, the motion has been made. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay, great. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, uh we will then turn now to the administrator's report uh for Margaret.
Yes, uh no, no items today. Um thank you.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Seeing no discussion items, we will turn it to Commissioner Higgins for the check run.
Sure, smaller than average check run of nine hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Um the uh check of the week is to um Playable State College uh for twenty thousand dollars, probably one of our last. Um Commissioner Small Business Grant Program from the CARES Act. Uh this particular business is uh located on Calder Way, uh very close to Hetzel Street, so. Want to thank them for um staying open and continuing to uh. You know, so employ people here in Center County, so would like to uh make the motion to approve the check run dated January twenty-second.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you, Commissioner, and over to Commissioner Gersham for voter registration.
All right, this morning we have a hundred and five thousand, two hundred and sixty-six registered voters in Center County. Uh that's down a hundred and seventy-six from last report, so the uh. The highlight reel looks at uh forty-four thousand and seventy-seven Democratic registrants, a hundred and forty Green Party. Six hundred and eighty-nine Libertarian, uh thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirteen no affiliation, and forty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-six Republicans. Which leads, uh if you add up all the others, it's uh three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one uh other parties. And when we look at the other parties, i- in alphabetic order, I'll go to the American Party, and the American Party in Center County has one registrant, so we want to thank the. The one American uh party member here in Center County. Uh the feature precinct is precinct number eight, which is Miles, Milesburg uh uh borough, and uh they voted at the the Milesburg Community Center. And it the, in the last election, there were total registered voters of seven hundred and thirty-four. Uh ballots cast was uh six hundred and five, which leads to a percentage turnout of eighty-two point four-three, which is uh. I think pretty solid turnout for for Milesburg uh precinct number eight. The folks that make it happen at the judge of elections is Jay Saldana. Uh the majority inspector is Sally Bartley, majority inspector is Grace Hall, and the clerks are Suzanne Krebs and Virginia Letterman. And uh want to thank everybody for uh for their help and uh thank the community center folks for allowing us to use their facility for voting, and we'll see you in just a little while.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh any executive sessions to report, Margaret?
No executive sessions to report, however, at the conclusion of the agenda today, the board will meet an executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. We do have our public meeting schedule, and that should be noted that it's a uh Thursday, January twenty-eighth. We will have the those meetings as listed there. Um we will uh at this time uh accept any questions from members of the press at this time that are with us. Uh so we'd be happy to take any via the the chat box, or if anybody wanted to unmute themselves and ask questions, we will allow, we will take them at this time. Okay, seeing no questions for us at this time, uh we will uh look for a motion to go into executive session at eleven oh eight.
Motion to go into executive session at eleven oh eight.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. We are in executive session. Okay, thank you, everybody, for joining us today.